I'm a flu and freshman because just ride two hours of.
Okay.
Vacation for a week, the two babies.
Yeah.
Your mics are hot.
I'm so sorry.
Your mics are hot.
Yeah.
I just like to see if you guys got quiet. Just kidding. All right. Good evening. We will call to order the regular Heath City Council meeting Tuesday, May 27th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. If you would all rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Bow your heads. Gracious and loving God, we come before you with gratitude for the opportunity to serve our community. We ask for your guidance as we gather to make decisions that affect the lives of our neighbors. Grant us wisdom, patience, and a spirit of unity. Help us to listen with compassion, speak with clarity, and act with integrity. May our actions tonight reflect the trust placed in us by those we represent. Bless our city, its leaders, its employees, and all our citizens. May peace and justice prevail in all that we do. Amen.
Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. We will now move into agenda item number two. This is our public comments section. So Chief Siri, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. First is Roy Stacy.
I was here to address item five on your agenda. So happy to wait until then.
Well, we have a public hearing for you, so you will absolutely have time there.
Tyson Gordon.
Same.
Same.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Doug Watson.
Mr. Watson as well. All for the public hearing.
Nancy Canavan.
Ms. Canavan. Same for the public hearing.
And and Ms. Phyllis Salverson.
Ms. Salverson. Did you want to talk in the public hearing or for public comment? If it's not on the agenda, you're good? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Can I be correct? She called me earlier.
Yeah, I want to speak.
Oh, you do?
It's just not on.
Then, public comment. You can take the lectern. Yes, ma'am. Norma, Norma keeps us all in line. Not just you, it's everybody. Thank you, Norma.
I'm Phyllis Salverson. I live at 626 Sarita Circle. Okay, I'm going to be talking about the Heath codes of code of ordinances. And I'll begin by saying that I find that the majority of the of Heath code ordinances that I've had reason or need to study, they've been on point and well done. However, having said that, I've also had many times to find that no one on staff or city council has taken any action to ensure the ordinances are actually being used or adhered to. The ordinance that I want to bring to your attention this this evening is 110 solicitation. The number of solicitors over the years have increased substantially. Roofers, painters, landscapers, tree trimmers, pest control, and so on, and so on, and so on. So just to give you an idea, and typically they all happen about the same way, but I'll briefly explain today's visit by a solicitor. And this is one of the nicer ones, nicer ones, I would say. This young man appeared to be maybe 25, 26 years old or whatever. And over a lot of years and the many times I've had solicitors to come, the first thing I do is they start their spiel. And the first thing I do is I say to them, where is your little wallet card that authorizes you or approves for you to be soliciting? We have an ordinance. That's a law. You understand an ordinance is a law. Haven't heard that name, that word, ma'am. Well, it's a it's a law that we don't, the city of Heath does not allow solicitors. And the the ordinance, like I said, I went through it quite a bit today, probably for the 15th time since I've been here. And I asked him about that. And he said, no, he didn't have one of those. And he said, it's the law. And I said, right. And I said, so what do I do? He said. I said, well, you need to, the city hall is about a mile and a half, two miles away. You need to go up to city hall, you and whoever sent you here. He goes, yes, my boss sent us here. There's five or six of us. I said, oh, okay. Well, you need to tell all of them. You need to tell all of them. You need to leave. And this is just a little small community you're in right now. Heath has a whole lot more people. And obviously, everybody in Heath that ordinance covers. So he says, is is the police going to get me? I said, well, I would think, knowing our our DPS, that if they see somebody kind of loitering around and going up and down people's houses and stuff, they might stop and ask you, you know, did you need some help? What's going on? And then when you tell them that what you're doing, they might have a few words for you. So the best thing you can do is you, he said, well, I can't leave. I said, what do you mean you can't leave? Because my my boss will tell me that I have to stay here until we do all the houses in this subdivision, and then we'll we'll be someplace else. And I said, well, you need to just leave, and you need to tell your boss. And he just was kind of pathetic about the whole thing, like, oh, my gosh, you know, this is horrible, and I don't know what to do. So I told him again, you need to leave and not be here. So that that's generally what happens. But when you've got roofers, and you've got landscapers, and you've got a lot of those, I mean, they're really, they'll tell you to go jump in a lake and words stronger than that, you know, right away. And so this guy, that's why I said this guy was was pretty nice. So one of the whenever I have an issue or a problem or whatever, I like to kind of think about it and say, well, what do we need to do in Heath? What do I, what am I going to say to you? Just, I'm not going to just throw it out in your lap, you know? And we got good, strong ordinances. And when they see the section 110 in section 110.05, oh, I'm sorry, it's 04, is the application and fee for permit. That's over two and a half pages, just that alone. And the whole ordinance is 11 pages. So once they see the application form, they might not want a solicitor in Heath as much. But past that, I think the root cause of what's going on with all the solicitation is the the people, probably by far, larger percentage of people in Heath have no idea. They just say, no, go away. Don't come back. Go away. Go away. You know, and that kind of thing. They don't even know. So maybe we can put it in the utility bill on the newsletter, something like that. Let people know that and tell them to, they need to send them to city hall to get their authorization to be out there. That's one issue. And then the other issue is, like today, the first thing I did is, he did have, which is required, he did have it on his shirt, the name of the company. And so I look it up. And if you look it up on your phone, it just says the name of the company, and it says Rockwall. Well, they're not in Rockwall. They actually have what they call a Dallas website. I mean, a Dallas facility, but it's not really in Dallas. It's in Plano. And they have lots of places across, actually, very large company or whatever. But we need to advise these kids they got out doing this stuff or whatever. We need to advise their boss that can't do that. We send them a, our staff sends them a letter, our staff gives them a call, whatever they do, just things like that. I think that once they know what's going on, hopefully we can get some of this, because it's, like I said, in the 30 years I've been here, it's really zoomed way, 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 way up there. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Salverson. Chief? No more. Okay. And duly noted, we do have an application process for solicitations. And you are right, we can do a better job of communicating that to the general public. So we've taken note of that. So thank you very much. Moving into our next agenda item is now our consent agenda. I believe everyone's had an opportunity to review that. So 4 dot A is action regarding the minutes of the May 9th, 2025 special meeting and the May 13th, 2025 regular meeting. So at this time, Chair will open the floor to entertain a motion as regards to the action on the meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from the May 9th, 2025 special meeting and the May 13th, 2025 regular meeting.
Okay, very well. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second by Councilman Thurgood. The motion moves. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Council.
Moving into agenda item number five, these are our items for individual consideration. 5 dot A, discussion and action regarding a design build contract with Grossman Design Build for the design permitting and construction of two new public safety facilities. Chief Siri?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, for your consideration, I have a contract regarding the public safety facilities, which are known as Station 30 and Station 31. I have the potential contractor here, Grossman Designs, that will follow a presentation after mine. Just a little bit of background in the process. In 2022, I came before city management and advised them that we needed to start planning and and looking at expanding our capabilities. We conducted a study that was done by Emergency Services Corporation International and identified the need for two public safety facilities. In '23, the certificate of obligations were approved for station construction. And I will say that at that time, the original plan was to build one station at the direction of Mayor and Council. I developed an RFQ with a scope to build two with that same budget. And I put the put the scope out that we wanted. And we had several put in. They went through a competitive selection process, and we've narrowed it down here to the one that is here before you tonight. Funding overview, again, it was the CO that was issued in '23. Also a partnership with HEDC NBC, and we're very thankful for their contributions and support in this. Without them, this wouldn't have been possible. The budget for the station includes turnkey design and construction for two stations. So that's all of our equipment, everything inside, the fixtures, everything. We'll be able to move straight in with all the equipment. Funds do not include ongoing personnel costs for additional staffing. Strategic outcomes of this plan, it's going to offer us an opportunity for faster, more reliable emergency response times, improved coverage during overlapping and high demand incidents, potential for improved ISO rating, which in turn can offer savings on homeowners' insurance. It enhances employee's safety and health and morale through modern design. And it supports recruitment and retention by providing professional, functional facilities. And I will say that I think that it also provides, we may see a more professional work come out of the public safety officers. They're already doing an excellent job, but but just give them something to be proud to come to work. And it also aligns with our our long term growth and development planning. We're designing these to to be our forever homes. We don't want to come back to council in 10 or 15 years and try to build on or add on. We're building these to be future proof. Station locations and roles. Station 30 will replace our existing facility. It will be located at 300 Chris Cooney Boulevard, which is in the roundabout area at Heath Hawk and Chris Cooney. It will house ladder 30, which is, we're expected to take delivery by the end of this year, and brush 30. In one wing, it'll house DPS operations. That's the daily staff that protect us each and every day. Then it'll also have DPS administration, Emergency Operations Center, training room, professional staff, property evidence, criminal investigations, the SRO unit, and the Fire Marshal's Office. And I'm really excited about the capabilities that we're going to be able to have with this station that we're not, we're not having today. Station 31 expands our coverage. This is a new addition. It'll be located at 1284 FM 740, which is directly on the, at the public worksite, at the front of the, front of the lot. And let me go back and say, both of these lots are city owned. We did not have to purchase them for this. We already own those. It will, it will house engine 31 and our reserve engine, and then DPS operations crew. Staffing considerations, 31, like I said, is a new facility to operate effectively. It will require new public safety officers and their equipment. Other than that, we have no other needs relating to the station or facility. Everything's going to be built in turnkey. I'm also applying for a safer grant that I'll be done with by July. And we will know if we're going to be selected somewhere in September to October. It's a cost sharing grant, so I'm trying to get ahead of that right now. Then I'll consult with the new city manager, Mr. Alexander, how this will be presented in your budget in the future. So next steps, if the contracts are approved, we'll get right to work. We'll begin the actual design following a guaranteed maximum price permitting and construction start. I provided a chart here just to kind of give a brief overview of our timeline. This is contractual timeline, so it could be, we're hoping it'll be shorter. But this is what they're going to be allotted within their their contract to be February 27, completion on 30, and January 27 on 31, based on some of the survey times. So that could change. Right now, if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer those, or we can save them for afterwards. I'll let the contractor come up and do a presentation about themselves, however you'd like to move forward, Mayor.
Okay, very good. We'll have the Grossman group. You take the lectern, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and you Council for giving us the opportunity to present to you today. I'm Eric Grossman with Grossman Design Build. This is my brother Brian Grossman. Just real quick, we'll go over about our company. So we started, we started in 1988. We go back to really the 1960s with our grandfather. He's an architect. So kind of the design build process is what we grew up with. We're just a one stop shop for design and construction. So we do the architecture in-house and the construction management. So really, we're one point of contact throughout the project. There's no blaming, going back and forth between an architect and a contractor. You know, we're going to argue with each other, but you know, we're one point for you guys. We we don't bid out to lowest bid. We have a kind of a trusted network of subs that we've worked with for a long time. So we know what what type of result we'll be getting from them. And they know what they expect from us. So we have a really good team that we work with. Here, really, the point I kind of want to make here is that we're trying to be a partner for you guys. We're not an adversary. We want to be a partner throughout this project. Like you said, February 27 is the construction timeline. And, you know, there's, there's a lot that's going to go on. But, you know, we want to be a good partner to the city of Heath throughout this process. Couple things in here. We've been featured in Firehouse Magazine. We've won AIA Award. And, you know, again, our goal is that we don't advertise, but, you know, on our next project, we work off referrals. So somebody's going to call you guys up and say, hey, how did you guys do? And so we want, you know, a good referral from you guys. And that's how we operate. Couple of projects we've done before in the past. This is a station in Barker County. This is the Peaster Station for Parker County, ESD 1. This is some interior pictures of it. But really, just kind of want to show the type of finish and the type of look of the stations we've done. Over the past eight years, we've really kind of focused on municipal projects. We've done about 20 fire stations and other municipal projects. And so really, that's kind of been our main focus the last eight years. Again, this is a project in Houston that we just finished last year. And then the project at the top is Glen Heights City Center. And so this was a a complete campus, if you will. And so it's a public safety building. It's a complete public safety building there on the bottom left, on the bottom, on the top, sorry, the top right picture on the bottom of that, and the U shape was a public safety facility. To the left was city hall. And then there was a community center at the top with a gym, a banquet room. But really, we wanted to be a whole campus feel. And so that was one of our, kind of our, our featured projects, if you will. The three projects below is Everman's Fire Station and City Mansfield and Parker County's Fire Station as well. So just real quick, we've worked with Chief Siri the last month and a half trying to put together a comprehensive program list. We can kind of go through this if you want, but we've identified what they're looking for and tried to incorporate that into our floor plan and our site plan. And I think we're going to give the city of Heath everything that they're looking for. So this first site on Station 30. So the area in red is the proposed site. There's quite a bit of acreage. You can see kind of in the bottom left is the floodplain. And you see how our topography really slopes from back to front. Excuse me, from front to back. So we have about a 20 foot drop from the main road. You can see everything in green is our, oops, excuse me, is a sewer easement around the site. And so we're looking to focus the building.
The corner, I don't think it works.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I was trying to point, I really want to point to this. Yeah. So what we're looking to do, sorry, we're trying to focus, we're trying to split the admin and fire. So we have our admin site here and our fire really kind of split with the bay as our dividing point between the two. So we have our public parking up front with our secure gate. And then this is all secure parking around on the back. And so one thing we wanted to focus on was really to have the bay exit away from the roundabout as much as possible. And so we wanted to keep our fire and our day to day having you know, an access to this outdoor space right here. So we thought this would be a really good feature for our trees. This is our floor plan. So the area in yellow is our, is our public space. And our areas in blue are, the training room is up top with our EOC, having access off the lobby as well. We have our area in the back, which would be our, our evidence room. And then our CID war room is, is right off of that with three CID offices. We have our vertical circulation in between the training room and the EOC. The plane on the left is our upstairs admin area. We have our chief swing on the, on the far left with our fire marshal and our captain's, captain's offices along the top with our restrooms and kind of a workspace in the center. Oops. We have our, our three bays in the center that are 70 foot deep. And then on the bottom side is our, we have eight bunks with our day room. And we have two sets of, we have a men's locker room and a women's locker room with a gym that, again, the day room and the gym face kind of this tree, you know, this natural area where they can go out and have, you know, outdoor space, workout outside. And then, excuse me. So this is our render. We wanted this to have a residential look. We didn't want to have a flat roof, commercial style building. We wanted this to kind of blend in with what the city of Heath is and and not just be a commercial type building along this. Looking at the comprehensive plan that was done in, I think, 2022, it was a kind of a farmhouse chic look, I think, that was approved. And so we kind of wanted to go with that style with natural stone and wood accents, but really kind of keep a residential look throughout the project. The area off to the right is a training room with, we tried, we wanted to make it have as much windows as possible to bring in light into that training room. Here's that close shot of it. And then for Station 31, again, this was kind of our program list that we went through, that we worked with Chief Siri on. Here's the site that he spoke about, relatively flat, having the, the station up front. You can kind of see the topography across the site is, is pretty, it slopes from the back to the front, but it's a gentle slope. Our site, we have an entrance and a pull through with a secured gate around the back. We have a public parking to the east and then covered parking in the rear with kind of a mechanical septic space in between the parking and the proposed station with a possible training area in the rear. This floor plan is a modified version of our Peaster Station, you know, really to kind of save time and to hit our budget. We decided to modify this floor plan to meet Chief Siri's needs. Again, there's a small area up front that, in the yellow, that's the public area with a secure door that goes to the back. There's a day room and kitchen in the main, in the main area of the building. And in the back right is three bunk rooms. And upstairs, there are four bunk rooms with a restroom. We have our gym off to the bay. So really, this is a two and a half bay station with all the supporting, supporting areas, the gear, the decon, SCBA and tools off to the, to the left of the bay. This is what we built in Peaster. So we'll modify this facade to kind of match the same type of materials that we used on our previous rendering. We'll cut the bays down, but really kind of go with this type of look. But use the materials that we're proposing on Station 30.
So as far as budgets go, the way that design build generally works is currently all we have is conceptual set plans. We haven't done any geotech topo surveys or any real engineering. We've done some preliminary engineering. We've come up with rough estimated numbers based off previous projects of similar size and nature. And with our conversations with Chief Siri, we've also come up with some station allowances per se for Chief Siri, we've also come up with some station allowances per se for FFNE, building signage, landscaping, IT AV access control, station alerting, appliances, lockers, evidence, filing systems, generators, specialty light fixtures and contingencies. Over the next month or two, our goal is to have some serious detailed meetings, do the geotech boring and reports and the topographic surveys, as well as begin our engineering. During that time, we will be able to narrow down these allowances, get actual firm bids, then once we do complete all the engineering, we send out everything and we create what's called a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price. And so, that's the, kind of the beauty of the design-build process, is that we are taking your budget and we're working backwards into multiple projects instead of just one. And so, we feel confident that we're going to be able to come in under your original proposed budget for both projects and meet Chief Siri's and the team's needs. Those conversations are, and meetings will take place, assuming we are able to get approved on our contract. We've worked with the city attorney quite a bit over the last couple of weeks, we got that completed, that is an agreeable contract. At this point, the conceptual price ranges get plugged into that along with a estimated schedule, which Chief Siri kind of mentioned on, and then we go to work on all the plans and engineering, and so, over the next three to four months, we'll come back to you with a guaranteed maximum price that will fall within this original conceptual price range. We've employed this method really since COVID due to variable prices, price increases, and so far, it has worked every single time. It, it helps us value-engineer things as we go, be fluid in our movements and not stuck into one set of plans, and so, that's, obviously, we're biased to design-build, that's what we do, but we do feel that it gives you the best value and the best project for the city.
All right, very good. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, counsel, do you have any questions for the Grossman Group or for staff?
Councilman Dodson, you're recognized.
So, thank you very much for the presentation, the aesthetics look very much in alignment with our overlay and all the other ARB stuff that we have here as well. When you talk about your guaranteed price, what we talk internally is not to exceed, is it synonymous with your guaranteed price?
Yes, sir, same, same thing differently.
And if I understand you correctly, you'll be coming back within two to three months? Or, or two numbers, or two to three?
So, we have a design time of ninety to one hundred and twenty days, yes, sir. And so, that starts once we receive the geotech report.
Gotcha.
And then we'll come back to you with approval.
Okay, so on item six point one, it talks about how the cost is not specified, will that specification come when you are able to arrive back with, with the, with the, with the pricing piece?
Yes, sir.
And then the whole piece with, on item seven K, retainage, would that fit into that same category?
Retainage is included, yes, sir.
Right, okay. One item I noticed on page twenty-six, item K, is sort of the material price escalation.
Yes, sir.
So, you have in there kind of a maximum fifteen percent escalation there, but fifteen percent on, you know, fifteen million dollars is, is a lot, a lot of money.
Understood.
And, I'm, you know, what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see that range tighten so that our exposure in that area isn't as great as this piece is, because it would be really easy to come back and say, well, hey, look, you know, our prices are this, and you guys are just going to have to suck it up and eat it.
Understood. So, the beauty of the contract is, there is also a out for the city at this point. So, currently, you're hiring us to do the pre-construction, where it's plans and engineering.
Right.
And then we come back to you with a guaranteed maximum price, and at that point, if it is more, or it's not what you anticipated, then at that point, you pay us in full for the plans and they are yours.
I mean, I, I think we're working with the, the goal of, of it being, you know, fifteen million max, and we're kind of working backwards to not, you know, get so close where, if there are escalations and we are kind of working through, you know, other things that are unforeseen, like if Encore comes back and, you know, wants to bring a power line, whatever the case may be, there's going to be something, but, you know, that will have some sort of contingency for that.
And what helps mitigate that is, it's not, we, we will come back to you with a guaranteed max, and that is a firm bid from all of our subs and suppliers, and the very next day that it is approved from the city, I will send out and lock in all of our subcontracts. And so, it makes it extremely difficult for these subs and vendors to try to increase their price, there is a whole lot of documentation that has to happen if for some reason that is the case and I do have to come back to you. Currently, to date, that has never happened, it is a worst-case scenario that we do like to include in the contracts.
Right. It looks like on your overall timeline that you're going from cradle to grave on two facilities in less than two years.
That's correct.
Do you have any other experience executing that quickly, and is the, is the piece that you showed earlier from the facility that you just completed, was it completed in a similar manner?
Yes, sir, so actually, both of them, the Peaster Station that Eric showed, there was another one in town called Pooleville, and they're about fifteen minutes apart, and they were completed at the same time using this method, and it took us, yeah, so Peaster and Pooleville, very similar stations, took a little less than a year and a half to complete.
Right.
The larger project, Glen Heights, the city center, it took about two and a half years to complete, it was on a ten-acre site.
It was also during COVID.
Yeah, it was also during COVID.
Gotcha.
And so, yes, sir, it was same method employed proposal.
Okay. One, or two other items here, Mr. Mayor, if I can, one on item twenty-eight and twenty-nine on page thirty-six, it talks about indemnification, generally speaking, in our contracts, there should be mutual indemnification in there, and we would expect that to be a part of this as well.
Correct.
Okay, so I would, I would want to see that in, in place, and my last question-
Councilman, and they have actually been working with our attorneys on this.
That's been marked out and agreed to by the city.
Okay, great, thank you guys very much. Last question, chief, for you.
Yes, sir.
Given both of these facilities, you had mentioned kind of in your setup and your opening comments on this, that this would be enough, or enough space, to manage Heath through whatever projected build-out that looks like, can you just comment on that?
Yeah, so we've just tried to design it around having enough space, enough office space, enough locker spaces to run two crews out of there if we needed to out of both of them, and then same thing with the office spaces, if there was ever a shift in the DPS model, we try to, try to really mirror that as well to separate some of that.
So, the shift in the DPS, if we went from a tri-modal to a bimodal system or something like that, then?
Yes, they, they would, the upper wing could be shared like with the chief, the fire chief and the police chief would have to share the upper admin wing, which is probably a good thing if that, if that were to occur.
Right.
Lower wing could be, you know, the police department area, the fire department's on the other side.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, very much.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilman.
Any other questions for, for staff or for the build design team?
I, I have, I have one. What are the average square footage of these buildings, square foot, do you, do you already know, or do you not that far?
Yeah, so roughly, the Station thirty, the larger station, is about twenty-five thousand square feet, just under, and then Station thirty-one, I believe, is ninety-eight hundred, ten thousand square feet.
Okay, and, and how many firefighters do they accommodate, like overnight, like, are there men going to be staying, living in these quarters, so how many, what's the accommodation for each?
On Station thirty, there are seven bunks, two of which are shared, doubles, and then on thirty-one, I believe there are six bunks, one is a.
One's an office dorm.
Yeah, one's an office dorm, right.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Very good.
I'm just curious, the other fire stations that you built, what were, what was the size of them comparably, is this something that you've built before, or is it bigger?
Yes, ma'am, so the one in Houston was twenty-six thousand square feet, it was an admin and fire station only for emergency service district. Peaster is ten thousand square feet, Pooleville was the same, Glen Heights, I think, totaled sixty-five thousand square feet with all three buildings.
So, good.
Very good. Councilman, any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Chief, do you have a, do you have any recommended motion, but before we go there, counsel, do you have any discussion amongst ourselves on any of your concerns? Obviously, just to reiterate, this was a CO, so this bond was set aside, and it was set aside for one building, and so, due to a lot of work and a lot of back and forth and a lot of research, we're now sitting here today maximizing this opportunity with two buildings on two different properties, so I very much appreciate the hard work that you and your, your team have done in, in trying to identify this opportunity. Are there any other discussion items amongst ourselves you have?
Just one, just one comment, you know, much like Mr. Mormons brought up about the city park, we should also put maintenance or make sure that maintenance of these facilities is a part or a line item in our budget, kind of on a go-forward basis, or at least part of the roll-up for that on a go-forward basis.
Yeah, agreed, and that's been a point of discussion already.
Okay, thank you, that's my last comment.
Okay, do you have a recommendation of a motion?
Do you want me to read it, or?
If, if, if you could provide it to Mayor Portem, we'll review that motion.
Okay, I've acknowledged it and we're all in prepared to read it.
If you're prepared to, to accommodate the, the motion that the staff has provided, then the chair will entertain.
Right. I move to approve the contract with Grossman Design Build based upon the estimated price range of fourteen point one to fifteen million and contingent upon the selection of an owner representative as selected by the city manager or designate.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor as stated, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Ombe. Any further discussion or questions on that motion? The motion moves, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously, thank you, counsel. Moving into Agenda Item five dot B ZTA, two zero two five zero one, conduct a public hearing, discuss and enact on an ordinance of the city council of the City of Heath, Texas, amending a land use chapter one fifty-nine zoning regulations, section one fifty-nine dot two one, conditional use to include allowing portable classrooms for the private schools of the City of Heath Code of Ordinance, providing a severability clause, repealer clause, and savings clause, providing an effective date, providing for publication and finding and determining the meeting at which the ordinance is adopted was open to the public as required by law, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This particular case is regarding a text amendment, and this is to the zoning code to allow for a temporary portable classroom with the approval of a conditional use permit, and in here you can see the property is located, that we're talking about, is the Fulton Academy located on Smurl Drive, this is the one that would be affected by this, one thing I do need to point out is that the ordinance, the text amendment, would affect all SF forty-three zoning classification, should there be another private school that enter any of those locations. So, with that being said, public notice did go out, we did send out forty-four notices, and as of today, we have received seven notices that are opposed to the, to the applicant's request or to this request, do you have a draft ordinance in your packet? This is, this is what the temporary portable classroom may appear to be or may look like, should they move forward into the CUP request, so the applicant provided that for us just to have, for your view. And so, the draft ordinance does provide the amendment for one fifty-nine twenty-one C for conditional uses to add number nine, their temporary portable classrooms for private school, and also the definition for what a private school is. Planning Zoning Commission did meet on this in, on May sixth, and after public hearing and comments from the, from the members of the community, they did, they are recommending denial of this case, and, and with that being a denial coming before you, it's going to require, it would require a supermajority vote of the council in order to approve this, technically what that means is six out of seven members would have to approve this in order for this to be approved. This is a discretionary act and decision for the city council, the applicant, I believe, is here, and, and I'm available for any questions that you may have regarding this.
Okay, before we have the applicant come up, do we have any questions for staff prior to the applicant? Very well. The applicant's here, you said?
I do not.
Doesn't look like it. Okay, so, so then we will steer our questions to staff, the one thing that I would make note of, so this is an ordinance change for our zoning, they would then come back for conditional use permit.
That's correct.
So, so to, to be allowed to submit a conditional use permit, they first have to get an ordinance change for our zoning to even allow that CUP to qualify for an application, right?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, with that being said, so therefore, you don't really technically have an applicant yet, because they have not fulfilled the duties of, of creating the conditional use permit.
That's correct, yes, and essentially what that is, the applicant for the school forwarded a letter requesting the portable building to be on the property, and because of that, because of the way that our code reads, and that being allowed use by right, we did not have that set up as a conditional use to allow that, so therefore, we have a text amendment, and so, that would carry forward.
So, so, so going deeper into this, obviously, a portable building is one item, if the applicant were to want to add on to their building today, would they be able to do that within the zoning rights?
Yes, because the private school is a use allowed by right, just like any other building facility, you can add on, and in this case, they can add on to this facility as long as they meet with, as long as they meet all of the density dimensional requirements that are located within the SF forty-three, single-family residential code, not the commercial code, but a residential code, which is more strict, it would be more strict than commercial, yes, sir.
And so, with that being SF forty-three, the allowance is what, seventy-five percent of the property, or?
So, the, the allowance in a SF forty-three district as far as building coverage, the maximum building coverage is thirty-five percent of the lot.
Okay.
And whereas, if you take a look at our local retail, commercial, that's sixty-five percent, so there's, there's a huge difference there.
All right, I, I will say, counsel, at this time, do you have any questions specifically? I don't necessarily have any questions other than the fact that more portable units within the City of Heath is probably not an ideal circumstance, nor do I believe adjusting our zoning to allow someone the opportunity to then come put in a conditional use permit to me is a bit of a red flag, and so, so I'm definitely not leaning towards favor on this topic, so, at this time, counsel, we'll open the floor if you have any questions, so recognize you for staff. There are no questions for staff?
Oh, you know, I have to do one.
Good, Councilman Dodson, you're recognized.
David, how long did the applicant tell you, because I know in reading through some of the resident comments, there were concerns with regards to the, the, the time that this would be in place and the potential for this to become a permanent structure, right, kind of it starts its temp and then becomes permanent, did the applicant give you any feel for the timing that they felt that this would be in place?
So, the applicant had been working on expansion of their, of the facility, they've indicated they have quite a few enrollments that is coming forward, and what they've indicated to staff was that they would probably have this for about two years, and so, if they came in with a CUP, that it would, they would request three, just in the event, that way they can get all their plans put together essentially for their expansion.
Got you, David, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, councilman. Any further questions, counsel? Any further questions, counsel, for staff? If there are no questions for staff, are there any comments before we go into public hearing? No?
I agree with you, Mayor, that this sets a difficult precedent for us here in the city. I mean, if it was R I S D that came in and said that, you know, Amy Parks or Linda Lyons or whatever had to have portables because bonds weren't passed and whatnot, you know, there's really nothing that we can do about it from this council. But this, there is something that we can do about it, you know, with regards to this particular facility. And I just think that the precedent that it sets with SF forty-three goes against what our comprehensive plan's all about.
Yeah, I would echo that. Ultimately, they have a mechanism to work with the city staff on a site plan for the necessary growth in which they're planning for. So, I would recommend that they continue to work with staff on a site plan versus trying to create a temporary solution when they have the mechanism at their fingertips. Fair? Councilman Thurgood?
Well, I guess I only had a question about, had they considered the added traffic impact of growing their school? And has that been considered?
Could be a question for staff.
So, the, a traffic, a traffic impact obviously would be a concern. That could be a concern. But from the standpoint of a buy right land use and to expand their property, they can still come forward with the expansion. However, at the time of approval for the site plan, that would come before not only Architectural Review Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, but also city council. And if the council would prefer a TIA at that time, or a traffic study, then that could certainly be requested at that time.
Very good. And ultimately, this is simply a zoning text amendment. So, okay, you're good. Any further questions for staff? Okay, very well. At this time, seven twenty-one, we will now open a public hearing on this item. So, those of you that would like to take the lecture, if you'd state your name and an address for the record.
My name is Roy Stacy. My wife and I own the home at fourteen oh nine Lawrence. Our property backs up to Fulton Academy on its east side. As stated three weeks ago, planning and zoning voted unanimously to deny this request, and we're asking the city council to do the same. The city advertises itself as premier residential community, so much so that recently the city's even come up with regulations that prohibit building a home in Heath that's even similar to another home within a mile of it. And so, with those kind of strict standards which we approve of, why in the world would the city want to amend an existing ordinance to allow portable buildings to be placed in the heart of Heath, particularly buildings that would be visible to the public in general, and also in the backyards of other neighbors? But our impression is that at least some of the council may not be familiar with what's really going on with this property. The neighbors only learned by chance several months ago that the city, or the school, had been meeting with the city staff for over a year now with plans to add a five hundred student school to this property, complete with gymnasium and a full-size swimming pool and three hundred parking spaces. We were not, the neighbors were not advised of this by the school or the city. But when we learned of it, we asked for a meeting, and we were given a meeting finally in December of last year where we voiced concerns about this project. The architect and engineer for the school was there, but no one else was there from the, from the school. We were told, we were telling them at that time, we had concerns about the water situation in Heath. We had concerns about traffic. They're talking about dropping off and picking up five hundred students on a two-lane road that has no shoulder and no turn lane. We voiced concerns over light pollution, noise pollution, fire and protection issues, fire and police protection issues. Some of us voiced concerns over the fact, we've been told that the school intends to put a ten-foot-tall wall in our backyard. And on top of that ten-foot pole, wall, there's going to be a three-foot guardrail because there's going to be cars driving on top of that wall five feet from our property. That's what the plan is. We asked for another meeting with actual owners and operators of the school. That was five months ago. We still haven't been given such a meeting. We were told that this school was going to be a charter school, not a private school anymore. It's going to be a charter school that was owned by a company called Pioneer Technology and Arts Academy, which owns and operates private schools around the country. At P and Z last, earlier this month, they said that, no, it was going to be a private school. And that was completely contrary to what they told us at the meeting in December. It's contrary to what they've been telling the city. And it's also contrary to what their own website says. I printed it up today, and it says on their own website that this is going to be for sixth through twelfth grades, it's going to be a charter school owned and operated by Pioneer Technology and Arts Academy. So, what we've been told is contradictory, what they've been telling the city is contradictory. And we're asking again today, I know my time's up. We're asking that you deny this amendment, but we're also requesting that city council start asking some questions so you can find out for yourselves what's really going on here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have, next, if you'd like to take the lecture and state your name and your address, please.
Hello, my name is Tyson Gordon. We live at fourteen oh five Lawrence Drive. And I echo a lot of what Mr. Stacy just said. So, there was a lot of thought that, we used to own a daycare and private school, myself and my wife. So, when we heard that this was going to be a charter school, there's a lot of differences. Charter schools are actually run by the government, funded by the government. You can't actually pay, you cannot pay for your kid to go. It's free tuition. Of course, they fill up quickly. They bring kids from a lot of other areas. I would ask that the city council vote against the portable buildings, for sure. Aesthetically, I think it's, you know, it's not pleasing to the eye. We all know that that intersection right there at Lawrence and, I guess, at Smurl, but it also changes into Heath Crossing, is just a nightmare right now. As Roy said, there's no shoulder. So, right now, so we've lived off of Smurl before for about eleven years, and then just moved about a mile down the road at Lawrence. And before there was even talk about building a school, a bigger school there, parents can't exit, drop off and pick up. They literally, there will be three or four cars, and it's all they can do just to get on the road. I've been at every meeting, I think, except the last one, as far as the charter school goes. They're asking to build an enormous facility. I think five hundred was the last number that we had, total head count. So, you can just imagine five hundred kids getting dropped off, five hundred kids getting picked up. So, I would just ask that, you know, especially today, that you vote against the portable buildings, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. We have another speaker that would like to speak during a public hearing? If you will, you'll take the lecture, state your name and address, please.
My name is Nancy Canavan, and I live at twenty-three Hillview Drive. And it's right behind the school where it's going to want all this done. First of all, I want to know, are they on city sewers, or is this a septic field?
We can't answer questions.
Oh, you can't?
A public hearing is just your statement, but we're happy to take note of your questions.
Well, I've been told that it's, they're on a septic field.
We're happy to take note of the question and have someone with staff get back with you.
That's one of the things. And the other questions that were brought up already, you know, I've already agreed with what they're saying. So, I just hope that we don't let these people put this portable buildings on. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Yes, ma'am, if you will. Please take the lecture and state your name and address, please.
I'm Plotted Overfield, fourteen Hillview. And of course, I agree with everything since afar. But one thing I want people to think about also is, they're not taking care of what they have now. Fulton Academy did. They sold out several years ago to this charter school, which I happen to know, well, my neighbor, he couldn't make it tonight, was on the board of Fulton Academy when they sold to the P T, whatever it's called now. When you come up Old Ridge Road, I know it's not the formal entrance to Heath, but you see the dilapidated house that is just terrible. Their fence is not taken care of. They don't really take care of their trees and the backyard and everything. So, how are they going to take care of a portable? Even Linda Lawrence, you know, Linda Lyons, the portables, they just don't keep up well. And it's, you know, they just, they haven't been good stories of what they bought. And, you know, we like Heath to be low Heath, but, you know, they have schools in Mesquite, Sutherland Mesquite, Roy City, Greenville, and they're fine towns, but I don't think we want that in Heath. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Great to see you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak during public hearing? If you will, please take the lecture, state your name and address, please.
I'm Deborah Hall. I live at seventeen Hillview, been there thirty-two years. I'm asking the council to please do not let this building come to our area. Several times, we have been, as gentlemen said, told one thing. And at the last meeting, I held up, y'all had the piece of paper that we got in the mail. And I asked the gentleman, I said, how large is this? Well, the portable's three thousand square feet, is what he said. I said, okay. I said, where's it going to be? You've got it, if y'all look at the picture, it's Hillview, and it's, I mean, right behind our houses and right by Tyson and his wife's. I mean, it's just, and so, I said, well, you've got it here. And he was sitting over, he goes, no, ma'am, that's not where it's going to be. And I'm like, well, this is what your picture says. And I said, well, where's it going to be? Well, it's going to be right behind the house that's there. Well, if you really look at it, I didn't get out and measure it, but there's not three thousand square feet behind the playground and to the city property. I looked right at the water tower. My house is right there and all these others, and Nancy's on the end. And I kept looking at it, and I was like, there's no way, there's no way. And I just ask you, because I know we're, Hillview's not the epicenter of the beautiful, big, ginormous houses, but it is our residence. And as much as I didn't want the water tower, it's there, but it supplies a reason to be there for Heath. We have exemplary schools. We have two neighbors from California that have moved to Heath because of their schools. That was the main reason. We don't need any expansions. I don't care if it's a portable or a building. When we are going to have people that bring zero to Heath, there will be on a charter school, Tyson explained this to us, the tax, there's no tax base. The only thing that they will be bringing to Heath is being maybe taken to the gas station and pumping gas, or going to Tom Thumb and getting their snacks like our high school kids do. But we get something out of that. We have exemplary schools that children leave here and go to the best colleges and come back and be part of our community. So, I just ask you to just, please, no portable and no expansion. And I appreciate your time. And I'm sorry I was late.
You're fine. Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to speak during public comment?
She was there squeaking. Y'all, Watson, ten Hillview Drive. Everyone that has been here before me tonight to speak on my behalf has expressed our concerns, which are legitimate. And, but I have this one idea. There is a home on that property. And we used to call it the Meyer's House. I'm not sure if it's any relationship. Well, anyway, most people here know what I'm talking about. Why doesn't this building or home is falling to the ground? It looks like it's in dire straits, best word I can use. But anyway, if they are needing classrooms, why don't they fix that home up? These other people have expressed this about that house. It's nothing but rat-infested, raccoon, pigeon, roost, sitting there right in the middle of all this, and they're talking about building this elaborate school with over five hundred kids, three hundred parking spots. They've even offered, the Hillview residents, which we found, or they found out that they could not legally do, they were trying to offer us, let us come over and use their swimming pool. So, anyway, I'm not in the swimming mode at my age, and I don't lay around the pool. I still work. I'm seventy-seven years old. I retired eighteen years ago, but I didn't give up. I still work. And we live on a quiet, dead-end street. We are modest. When I moved there, I thought I was doing pretty good. But now, I'm surrounded by multi-million dollar homes. And I can understand if I had spent that kind of money and now removing or allowing this to happen in the middle of my neighborhood, there'd be more I'd be saying about this than that. But anyway, I just hope that y'all deny their request to allow this portable to be moved in and maybe make the suggestion to fix up the old Meyer's home if they're needing some classroom space. And you can just drive by there. It's a mess. You just have to see these people. Well, anyway, I've used up my three minutes, as usual. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to speak? In the public hearing, very well. Okay, at this time, at seven thirty-seven, the public hearing is now closed. I would like to say, we love your road. Ms. Claudette saw me out there right after the storm. I was like, my goodness, what are we doing over there? I live a block away, just in a different neighborhood. So, we love you guys. So, totally understand what everybody expressed there. Obviously, this is not a hearing on expansion or site plans or anything else. This is about a text amendment to allow portables, and it's really not specifically for this because they don't have a conditional use permit application. Ultimately, this is about changing an ordinance that would affect the entire city. So, just as we, council, think through what we're doing here in this decision-making, are there any further discussions? If not, then the chair will open the floor to entertain a motion. I will make a motion to deny. I will make a motion to deny this zoning change for chapter one fifty-nine for allowing portable classrooms for private schools for the City of Heath. And that is the motion as it sits. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Horn. Do we have any further discussion on this? The motion moves. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Very well.
Thank you.
Moving into Agenda Item five dot C, this is case number Z A two zero two five zero two. This is to conduct a public hearing, discuss and enact on an ordinance amending the future land use map of the City of Heath two thousand eighteen comprehensive plan by changing the retail and medium-density residential designation to rural estates designation for the property described as Lot Two. Daniel's addition being a Daniel's addition being a three-point-seven-six-six acre parcel of land addressed as sixteen oh three Smurl Drive, city of Heath, Rockwall County, Texas. This is a Rockwall CAD ID one six zero nine nine. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. And in this particular case, the next two cases actually are, I'm gonna call them companion cases. One, the first one here is to amend the future land use map in order to move forward with a zoning change. So in this case, the future land use map, and what the Texas Local Government Code says that the future, it says that the future land use map must be amended in order to be consistent with the, with your zoning, and so that's what this, that's what the purpose of this is for. The property is located in the northwest quadrant of Smurl Drive and Ridge Road. You can see it here in the blue outline here, and it's about a three-point-seven acre property. We did send out notices to properties that were within five hundred feet, and we did receive three notices back in favor of this request. And this is, you can see the property, how it's laid out here. You have a lot of trees that are located on this property. You have a private drive that runs up along here to be able to access the property, and this is more along the lines of what we call a flag lot. So the frontage is technically gonna be, technically, it's right here, but this was platted in nineteen eighty-one, and so you have the lot frontage is gonna be here. There is an existing home on the property. I believe it's being demolished at this point. So this particular case is about amending the future land use map to allow for the zoning change. Once again, we take a look at the current future land use map, the twenty-eighteen map, you'll notice that the property actually has two designations. It has a local retail designation here, and also the yellow, this yellow is a medium-density residential. And what that means is that the medium density is actually SF twenty-two. This is an obsolete zoning classification, and it's no longer in use. And also, this being a local retail designation, there's not gonna be retail on this property. So with that being said, it's prudent to be able to take a look at this and be able to amend the future land use map in order to allow for zoning. That way, this can be a residential property, which is what the applicant intends to do. And so what the comprehensive plan, the recommendation four point nine says is to amend the future land use map prior to rezoning, which is the next case on this, and then also to ensure that the city's zoning regulations are consistent with this and possibly with the future land use map, and then to also, once again, to amend the future land use map to match those changes. So this is the first step in moving forward on this case. This particular case did go to Planning and Zoning Commission on May sixth, and Planning and Zoning Commission did hold a public hearing and is forwarding recommendation of approval. And so with this, an amendment to the future land use map is required before processing a request to change the zoning of the property. And with that being said, this is a discretionary decision for city council. And I'm available for any questions that you may have, and this is a public hearing. And Mr. Doty is here this evening to answer any questions you may have as well.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? If there's no questions for staff at this time?
I think there is a question over here.
I'm sorry?
Okay, I have a little question. Have they submitted a home building plan? Like, do we know what the home they want to build on this lot is?
Yes, and they're gonna build a five thousand square foot home.
Okay.
Be a single-story home that'll be located on the lot, and they meet all, we'll go through that part of it, they meet all the technical requirements for SF forty-three zoning. Yes.
Okay. All right.
Very good.
Mr. Gonzalez, what was the P and Z vote?
It was unanimous, five to zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Counsel? Okay. At this time, we'll have the applicant take the lectern. Please state your name and your address, please.
Stephen Doty, sixteen oh three Smurl.
So at this time, counsel, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I have one. The little road, is that a easement or is that actually part of the property?
It is actually part of the property.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just want to comment.
Okay.
I really applaud what you're doing. I think if more people came to this council and had three-plus acre lot sizes, we'd be happy people. So that is absolutely moving in the right direction and give you a ton of credit, and it's just a gorgeous, gorgeous property to build, to build your own home.
It's a great spot. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Doty.
Thank you.
Very good. Just to reiterate, obviously, this is a two-step process, so we do have an applicant that will be addressing in the next case number on Agenda Item five D. Obviously, it's been laid out. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for laying this out very simplistically for everybody. Just to reiterate, right, you have a, in two thousand eighteen, we have a comprehensive plan that lays out what that future land use is supposed to look like. You have this property, which is connected to another property, and that whole section was identified as a future retail space, so there was only a sliver of this piece of property that was gonna be allowed to be residential, and again, it was a residential SF twenty-two, which is a half-acre lot that is now obsolete. So again, I do applaud the applicant for bringing this forward, taking down our commercial density, and putting this in front of the council as an opportunity to transition something that at a later date would have been commercial into a larger state lot. And so with that being said, the chair will, at this time, open the floor to entertain a motion. Do we have a recommended motion?
It's discretionary since it's a zoning discretionary.
Perfect. All right.
Public hearing?
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, public hearing. Well, it cleared out so fast, I was like... Thank you, Heather. Okay, at this time, we will open the floor for a public hearing at seven forty-six. Are there any residents that would like to speak for or against? Very well. At seven forty-six, we will close the public hearing, and we will go back to allowing the floor to be opened to entertain a motion.
I move to accept the zoning change application on ZA two oh two five dash zero three, requesting...
Zero two. This is for the future land use map, ordinance amendment, for the text amendment for the comprehensive plan. You're referencing the next case number.
Gotcha. Yeah, I was referencing the background. Okay. Let me restate. I request a motion to approve case number ZA two oh two five dash zero two, to move from the initial designation of commercial zoning to residential zoning on the three-point-seven-six-six acre parcel of land located at sixteen oh three Smurl Drive.
Very well. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Myers. Do we have any discussions? At this time, the motion moves. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Moving into Agenda Item five dot D, case number ZA two zero two five zero three. This is to conduct a public hearing, discuss and act on an ordinance changing the zoning classification from SF twenty-two, single-family residential district, and LR, local retail district, to SF forty-three, single-family residential district land uses for the property addressed at sixteen oh three Smurl Drive. Further described as Lot Two, Daniel's addition, city of Heath, Rockwall County, Texas. The zoning change is to facilitate the construction of a single-family home to be located on three-point-seven-six-six acre parcel of land. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir. Once again, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Went over this, the same thing. The only thing that's different here, this is a change to the zoning from a local retail district and single-family twenty-two residential district to SF forty-three, single-family residential district land uses. Now, this future land use map has been changed. We can move into accommodating the request here for a zoning change. Same notices did go out for this, for the same seventeen property owners, and we did receive the same notices in favor of the applicant's request once again. This right here just shows you the two zoning, dual zoning on this property, that being, the red being the local retail, and then the yellow being the SF twenty-two. Once again, we've talked about that being an obsolete district, and this not necessarily the right or desired land use for this property as far as a local retail use. And so with that, to answer the council member's question, this is the ordinance compliance matrix, is something that we go through when an applicant comes in to request zoning to make sure that what they are bringing forward is going to meet these requirements. And so based on the information that the applicant's provided to us, they meet all of the technical requirements from our SF forty-three zoning district. And with that, the comprehensive plan does have a policy recommendation in four point eight, and once again, these are guidelines to review. And essentially, you're just asking, does this provide something unique for Heath in this rezoning? Does it provide for off-street parking and bicycle connections? How does this impact the city fiscally? And also, does this respect the environment significantly, like, for areas like Flood Plain? And if you go back and you take, if you can remember the aerial on this, there's a lot of trees on this particular property, so the house actually will be hidden from even the neighbor that's right there to the south. So with this, the, with that in mind, Planning and Zoning Commission did, once again, review this. They did hold, held a public hearing and discussed, and are forwarding a recommendation of approval for this particular request. And once again, being that this is a zoning change, this is a discretionary decision for the city council. Once again, Mr. Doty is here to answer any questions, and I'm available for any questions as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Counsel, if you will, take a look at page one oh nine. He's referencing the compliance metrics. So this allows you to look at what our city's regulations are, and then what the applicant's compliance is. So whenever you do have questions on some of these items, this is the metrics in which the city actually provides, or the staff does, for us when we're making these decisions. And obviously, there's no variances here in this request. Right? Very good. So counsel, do you have any questions for staff or for the applicant? You're already familiar with this, so are there any questions at this time? No questions. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Okay. Now, the chair will open the floor to entertain a motion.
Public.
Oh, gosh, public hearing. I'm doing great tonight, man. You just didn't draw a crowd. I'm just not used to it.
Sorry.
You could've got some people to oppose it. All right. At this time, seven fifty-two, we will go into a public hearing. Are there any residents that would like to speak for or against? I don't mind. I'm sitting, wait. No one? Okay, I guess you've done a well job here. All right. Public hearing is now closed at seven fifty-two. Very good. The chair will open the floor to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Good. We have a motion to approve this zoning change from single-family residential and LR, local retail, to SF forty-three, which will then fall into compliance with our recently voted-in new land use map for a comprehensive plan by Councilman Mormon. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Ombi. Do we have any further discussion? At this time, the motion moves. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Thank you to the applicant.
Good job, Mr. Doty.
Okay. Moving into, actually, I want to shift gears and go back to our Agenda Item number three. I was trying to push forward because I didn't, I knew that we had a number of public hearings, so at this time, we'll go back to city manager comments and council comments. Chief Siri.
Yes, sir. Just a few comments. First, as we head into the dry months of the dry day of summer, I want to remind the citizens to follow their water scheduling twice per week. Stage restrictions, state water restrictions are year-round for all customers of the North Texas Municipal Water District. You can find the watering schedule on the city website, and we thank you for your efforts to conserve. Next, we have the comprehensive plan update is complete, and the draft plan in the summer will be posted on the city website this week for citizen review and comment. We will publish announcements on our social sites and send our notification list as soon as the documents and comment form are posted. We want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Comprehensive Update Committee for their hard work on this important project. And lastly, we are getting ready for the Independence Day and Beef of our annual...
Fourth of July Parade on Fourth of July. You can find all the details and registration link on the city website. A part of this is recognizing our veterans. It's very important to us as a part of this city event. If you or you know someone who has served, please attend the ceremony and ride the veterans' float so that our community may honor you. And we also want to encourage any local businesses to participate and make a float for the parade.
Very well. I would echo that. Fourth of July is a very wonderful, very hometown-feel event. I remember the first time I ever went, and I was like, "Wow, this is really the coolest small town I could have ever moved to." I'll be honest with you. And so we relish every opportunity we can to go to that event, and really, any event that we put on as a city. So please encourage your neighbors to go, and then also, any businesses local or in the surrounding areas to come and join us, because it'll be a great, a great event. On another item, I would also like to say thank you to Chief Siri. He's our operating acting city manager for a very short time, and so he's doing a great job keeping up, and we wish Ms. Adele all the best as she's taking on a new city administrator role in Quinlan. And we're also very excited, if you haven't seen the announcements, I tried to put it on every Facebook group I could, but we do have a new city manager that's gonna be joining us. The city manager is a seasoned veteran city manager. He's also been the assistant town administrator for Highland Park, so we're very excited to have him join us. He's been with them for the last eleven and a half years. And so thank you, counsel, and thank you to the residents. I hope to see him soon. I'm sure Chief can't wait. He will be here starting on June twentieth, so we're very excited to accept him into this city. So are there any other comments from counsel at this time?
Just...
Councilman Dotson?
Just one bit of legislative update for the citizens in this group here. SB fifteen, which is the piece of legislation dealing with local zoning ordinances, was passed through committee today with the following brackets, and those brackets are cities that are under one-hundred-and-fifty thousand and counties less than three-hundred thousand will not be applicably dealt a zoning change to defer to the city of Austin to determine zoning. So we are currently bracketed out of that for a while. That's the good news. The bad news is, is that it's a point on the curve, and that once sort of that foothold is in place, it could potentially creep down in future legislative sessions, which is something I think that we all have to pay attention to. The second item, SB six seventy-three, which deals with accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, is currently in consideration tonight. If they don't reach resolution on that by midnight, then it will effectively die in committee. I'm certainly hopeful that it dies in committee, because ADUs for a city like Heath increases density, and that goes counter to everything that we try to employ as a municipality. There are two things, however, because even if it dies in committee tonight, it will absolutely be on the ninetieth legislative agenda in the next session. Two things that we can do to strengthen our ability to resist that is, number one, modify our city ordinances, and number two, and maybe even more importantly, modify the HOA ordinances which supersede this particular bill that would come out of Austin. So that's something that we would want to be speaking with our local HOAs about. The final piece is SB twenty-two fifteen has also passed committee and will be on the desk of the governor to sign. That particular bill deals with if a local municipality does not follow its own guidance with regards to local zoning, for example, our SF forty-three or SF three-point-oh, if we deviate from that and do not allow... For example, our SF forty-three or SF three-point-oh, if we deviate from that and do not allow applicants to move in under those guidelines, we are subject to litigation from the state's attorney general. So that has actively passed and will be on Abbott's desk to sign.
Very good.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson. Appreciate it. Any other comments? All right. Moving into our executive session, Agenda Item number six, in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Chapter five-five-one, Subchapter D, the city council recessed in the executive session, this is a closed meeting, to discuss the following. Six dot A, Section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter regarding wholesale water purchase contract between the city of Rockwall and the city of Heath and city manager position. Six dot B, Section five-five-one dot zero-seven-four, deliberation regarding the appointment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee regarding city manager position. At this time, at eight, we are in executive session.